Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for April 25th, 2022. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Ms. Nosorbet.
Here.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
Mr. Stites.
Present.
Ms. Hulting.
Present.
Ms. Hoppe.
We hope Ms. Hoppe joins us during the meeting.
Dr. Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have seven of eight council members present and one on the way. We have a call.
Thank you. Counselors, in your packet you have minutes and study session notes. We have the minutes of March 28th, 2020. We have study session notes from April 4, 2022, and actually, March 28th, 2022, April 4, 2022, and study session meeting minutes from April 11, 2022. There are no objections. We'll let the minutes stand as presented and so ordered. Unless I hear objection, we'll leave the agenda as presented, so ordered. We have several proclamations today, and I'm going to go to the podium, and we'll go Our first proclamation today is for Law Day, and I'd like to invite Judge Randall to join us at the podium. Judge, thank you. This is a proclamation for Law Day in 2022. Whereas the preamble to the United States Constitution mentions forming, quote, "a more perfect union," first in its list of purposes; and whereas for more than 230 years the government outlined by the United States Constitution has maintained a representative government based on the rule of law; and whereas, over the course of American history, the American people have made changes to their government, including formal amendments to the U.S. Constitution to fulfill promises of the framers and guarantee rights; and whereas, the United States has overcome great challenges in its history, including a great Civil War, two world wars in the 20th century, global pandemics, and periodic economic depressions; and whereas, the United States, like much of the world, continues to experience great social change, including social movements for equality for women, ethnic and racial minorities, people with disabilities, and other groups, leading to a growing awareness of systemic sources of oppression; and whereas, the creation of a more perfect union requires an educated citizenry that understands the rule of law and demonstrates engaged citizenship; and whereas, the theme for Law Day 2022, commemorated annually on May 1st, is, quote, "towards a more perfect union, the Constitution in times of change." Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do recognize May 1st, 2022, as Law Day. I urge everyone to observe this day by renewing their commitment to work to achieve a more perfect union that strengthens our democracy, defends our liberty, and pursues justice for all. Would you like to say a few words?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, thanks Judge, and thanks for the work that you do for our community. Our second proclamation is for Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and I'd like to invite our clerk Steve Kirkpatrick up. Clerk Kirkpatrick? So this is a proclamation for Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 1 through 7, 2022. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world; and whereas, the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants and provides the professional link between the community members, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels; and whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all; and whereas, the duties of the municipal clerk are many, including serving as an official record keeper for the municipality, issuing licenses and permits, facilitating the annual board of review and municipal redistricting process, attending meetings, and serving as a community resource; and whereas, municipal clerks continue to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations; and whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do recognize the week of May 1 through 7, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Steve Kirkpatrick, and deputy city clerk, Robin Eaton, for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our community, dated this 25th, the day of April, 2022. Clerk Kirkpatrick, thank you for being here tonight and the work that you do.
When I assumed this role two and a half years ago, I did not understand that municipal clerkship is one of the four oldest professions in the world. We all know what the first one is: law, medicine, theology, and then of course, the clerkship. Clerks have been around literally since the time of Braveheart and before. The first written records of who was born, when, and where were recorded by clerks in the Book of the Dead in Great Britain a thousand years ago. So we are particularly grateful for this honor, and I, as the mayor, and on behalf of my deputy clerk, I want to thank you and accept this proclamation on behalf of all the other municipal clerks across the state.
Thank you, Clerk Kirkpatrick. Our next proclamation is in support of Public Service Appreciation Week, May 1 through 7, 2022, and I'm pleased to invite Kylie Fisher, Senior Planner Scott Cutler, and Stephanie Stevens to the podium. If you all are here, please come up. This is a proclamation in support of Public Service Appreciation Week, May 1 through 7, 2022. Whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, who make life better for us all; and whereas, public employees and volunteers make great contributions to their communities by serving in such areas as health, education, crime prevention, fire protection, and conservation; and whereas, the employees of the city of Wheat Ridge are committed to exhibiting the highest standards of excellence, dedication, creativity, and skills; and whereas, the dedicated employees and volunteers of Wheat Ridge are an integral part of improving the quality of life in our city by being responsive to the needs of residences and businesses, and by supporting city services, thus making Wheat Ridge a special place to live, work, and play; and whereas, the effectiveness and efficiency of government depends in large measure on public employees and volunteers whose task is to provide outstanding customer service on a daily basis; and whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge recognizes the dedication and talents of its employees and volunteers, as well as the importance of the services they render at all levels of government. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1 through 7, 2022, as Public Service Recognition Week in the city of Wheat Ridge, and I call upon all members of our community and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public service and recognize the contributions that public service employees and officials make every day to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, dated this 25th day of April, 2022. The clerk would please note that Counselor Hoppe has joined our meeting. Okay. Next on our agenda is the public's right to speak. Members of the public may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under public's right to speak. I have a sign-up sheet, which I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you would like to speak, you may come forward now, and when you come up to the podium, if you would please give us your first name, your last name, your address, please spell your last name, and when you're done with that, the clerk will turn on the timing buttons and you'll have three minutes to address the council. So as I said, we have no one signed up to speak, but if there's anyone here who's not signed up and would like to speak, you may do so now, and we will also take any comments from online, and we don't have anyone that's raised their hand, so we will conclude our public's right to speak, and we will go to our first agenda item. This is the consent agenda item. Counselor Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda item number 1A, motion to award the 2022 Slurry Seal Project to A1 Chip Seal Company of Denver, Colorado, and approve subsequent payments to the amount of $269,392.65 with a contingency amount of $13,469, for a total not to exceed the amount of $282,861,065. Consent agenda item number 1B, motion to award the 2022 Street Paint Project to Road Safe Traffic Systems Incorporated of Englewood, Colorado, and approve subsequent payments in the amount of $263,480 with a contingency amount of $13,174, for a total not to exceed the amount of $276,654. 1C, resolution number 22-2022, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 budget, general fund budget, to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $71,500 for Metro Denver Homeless Initiative Flex Fund, Porchlight Family Justice Center, and Community Table. 1D, resolution number 24-2022, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $50,500 for the addition of one full-time human resources business partner. 1E, motion to award a contract and approve subsequent payment of $101,778.30 to OfficeScapes for the purchase and installation of office furniture for the $7490 West 45th Avenue Building lease. 1F, motion to approve the purchase of tandem equipment outfit from Holman Upfitting Truck Services of Colorado Springs, Colorado, in the total amount not to exceed $158,374.
Thank you. This is our consent agenda items. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1F?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, and 1F.
Second? We have a motion and a second by Ms. Weaver. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number two. Counselor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 02-2022, An Ordinance Approving the Re-zoning of Property Located at 7585 West 32nd Avenue from Restricted Commercial RC to Planned Residential Development, PRD, case number WZ-20-06. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from residential commercial RC to planned residential development, PRD, with an approval of an outline development plan, ODP, for the development of 14 single-family attached homes at 7585 West 32nd Avenue. The zone change is compatible with the surrounding land uses, provides for housing options, and encourages improvement of the underutilized property.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. I've been informed by staff that a legal protest has been received on this item, and specifically, section 26-112.112(c) .7b of the code states, and I quote, "If a protest is submitted after first reading of the ordinance, the hearing shall be opened, and no testimony shall be taken, and shall thereupon automatically be continued to the next regular business meeting of the council." Therefore, I am declaring that this presentation will be continued until a public hearing on Monday, May the 9th, 2022, in council chambers. And that will conclude. We will not take any testimony or any other presentations on that, but we will have the hearing on May 9th, so that concludes item number two. We will go to then item number three. Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 03-2022, An Ordinance Approving the Re-zoning of Property Located at 4877 Robb Street from Agricultural 1A1 to Planned Commercial Development, PCD, case number WZ-21-09. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1A1 to Planned Commercial Development, PCD, with approval of an outline development plan, ODP, for the development of a tree service business at 4877 Robb Street. The zone change is compatible with the area and allows for an appropriate transition from surrounding land uses while encouraging investment in a long vacant lot.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you intend to testify in this public hearing, by fact that you testify, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it. And I will go to Mr. Goff. Do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Excuse me, we do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephanie Stevens, senior planner, is here this evening.
Okay, Ms. Stevens.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I am presenting case number WZ-2109, which is a request for approval of a zone change from agricultural 1 to planned commercial development with an outline development plan on property located at 4877 Robb Street. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The properties within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The property is located on the west side of Robb Street between I-70 Fronted Road North and approximately West 50th Avenue. The site is unplatted and totals about 3.4 acres in size and is presently vacant, unimproved land. Both the Wadsworth and Swadley ditches run over land through this site, with a significant grade change in the northwest corner of the site, north of the Swadley ditch. The property is zoned agricultural 1, as are properties to the north. To the south, west, and east, the properties are a mix of planned industrial development, planned commercial development, commercial 1, and commercial 2 zoning, and most of the surrounding uses are commercial and light industrial, although the agricultural 1 properties to the north do contain single-family homes. The request tonight is for a rezone from agricultural 1 to planned commercial development, and the outline development plan accompanies the zone change requests and establishes the zoning and development standards. The purpose of the request is to allow the development of a tree service business while preserving natural features that exist on-site today. Staff advised that a planned development was most appropriate because of the ability to customize permitted uses and also the ability to modify the intensity of development within the site in order to preserve the natural features. The code allows for processing ODPs and SDPs concurrently or sequentially, and the applicant has chosen the sequential two-step process. I'll go through the ODP document, then talk about the criteria for review and staff findings. The outline development plan establishes the PRD zoning. The ODP depicts the site broken up into three distinct planning areas, transitioning from most intensive along the southeast to least intensive to the northwest. The three planning areas are summarized broadly as follows. Planning Area 1 is located along the southeast portion of the site, along Robb Street, and will contain typical developed commercial uses to support business operations. Planning Area 2 is in the middle of the site between the two ditches and may contain some building, parking, and storage areas on the western portion, and lumber milling, greenhouse, and nursery plantings to the east, closest to Robb Street. Planning Area 3 is located to the northwest of the site next to the adjacent agricultural 1 residential properties, to be preserved mostly in its natural state with some allowances for outdoor storage of natural materials if screened. This table summarizes the development standards that are proposed in the ODP. Permitted uses are those, there are uses that are permitted in the city's established agricultural 1, commercial 1, and commercial 2 zoning, with emphasis placed on encouraging uses that support employment and agriculture while maintaining natural features. The specific uses being sought include a tree service business and supporting uses, including an office, shop, retail, tree nursery, greenhouse, lumber milling, limited outdoor storage and indoor storage, temporary Christmas tree sales, seasonal farmers markets, and potential for a caretaker's residence. Height is proposed to be a maximum of 35 feet. Architecture follows the typical standards of Architectural and Site Design Manual, except for the request to allow metal as a primary material with the requirement for an enhanced facade along Robb Street using brick or stone to dress up the building near this street. Setbacks are comparable to that of our commercial zone districts, but Planning Area 2 and 3 limit development by restricting land uses on those planning areas, thereby increasing setbacks to the adjacent residential on the north side. Building coverage is proposed to be a maximum of 25% to match agricultural zoning standards, and no buildings will be allowed on the northern Planning Area 3. The prohibition on structures in Planning Area 3 buffers from agricultural uses to the north, avoids challenging topography in that area, and protects the natural state. Parking is to be provided in accordance with mixed-use code standards. This is a remote location, and the use is not anticipated to bring high parking needs. In all other areas, the project is proposed to comply with the zoning code in terms of lighting, fencing, signage, and streetscape design. This is the sketch plan from the ODP. More commercial uses are permitted on the eastern end of the site, closer to Robb Street, with fewer commercial uses allowed as the property extends to the west. The primary office building and shop for the tree service business, as well as any major improvements such as paved parking areas and detention, will be located in Planning Area 1 and will be oriented along Robb Street. A potential caretaker's residence could also be located in Planning Areas 1 or Planning Area 2. Two access points are proposed to serve the building from Robb Street. Buhicular access will be limited primarily to Planning Area 1, and potential for limited access in Planning Area 2 if or when the Wadsworth ditch is piped underground, with other planning areas to be mostly preserved in their natural state. The ditches provide a natural transition between planning areas, and the areas along each ditch are intended to be preserved for wildlife movement. The Wadsworth ditch is further south, located between Planning Area 1 and 2, and will likely be piped with future to support, with support of the ditch company. This swadley ditch to the north is anticipated to remain unpiped and in its natural state with a new ditch crossing to be provided for access via skid steer. Modification to or crossing of either ditch would require approval of the respective ditch company and would be required at time of SDP. The planned development places standards to protect the ditches, which may serve as wildlife corridors, to create a buffer to the residential properties to the north, to combine the limits of outdoor storage, and to prescribe where the commercial activities and milling may take place. This PCD is customized so the property can serve as a transition between various land uses that surround it. It balances a desire to put the property to productive use and also the desire to protect natural features. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. A full analysis of the criteria for consideration are provided in the staff report. This image is an excerpt from the comprehensive plan, which provides guidance in terms of land use. The mixed-use employment designation encompasses the site and all surrounding properties north of I-70. The proposed zone change is consistent with the mixed-use employment designation while respecting the existing agricultural nature of the area, and the commercial project supports the city's goals. The ODP reflects allowable uses, development standards, and architectural requirements that help with economic growth, promote quality design, and balance compatible land uses and retains the community character. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on July 26, 2021, on Zoom. No members of the public attended the meeting. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted, and 15 days in letters were sent to properties and property owners and residents within a 600-foot radius. A few calls were received to clarify the proposal, and one neighbor commented at Planning Commission, but ultimately no objections were raised. No further comments were received. Staff believes the zone change request meets the criteria. It allows for a balanced, compatible, and balanced land use, complies with the comprehensive plan, and it promotes economic growth and quality design while facilitating the development of a long vacant lot. All agencies can serve the property, and the proposal is in line with the criteria for zone change to planned development. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request. Planning Commission recommended approval at a hearing on March 17th, and if City Council approves the ODP, the zone change would be considered approved, and the applicant could move forward with the specific development plan and plat. That concludes my presentation. The applicant would also like to give a brief presentation, and we're both here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward now?
Sure.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
My name is CJ Kirsten with Tahoe Consulting, fifty-seven thirty East Otero Avenue, Suite Two Hundred, Centennial, Colorado, eight zero one one two. I am here tonight representing the applicant, Rocky Mountain Hardwood Processing. Rocky Mountain Hardwood Processing is a small local company. The company services tree removals with a zero-waste philosophy. The goal of buying this property and developing it is to obtain more space and allow the company to grow. Both owners have been in the tree removal and reuse business for a number of years, but have simply outgrown their current surroundings. Their plans on-site are to cut large logs into slabs, mill down branches into mulch, as well as use this material to produce live edgeboards. In addition, they plan to grow and propagate trees to sell to customers that they've recently completed tree removals for. Initially, they'd like to build a shop and a nursery. This customized zoning allows for a variety of land uses that will not burden or harm the wildlife or agricultural residential existence. The protection of the existing ditches and the wildlife movement likely could not be maintained if straight commercial or industrial zoning was being proposed. The easterly planning area is proposed to have the hard improvements for business operation, whereas the westerly planning areas are proposed to maintain most of the existing site features while having some softer improvements to support PA One, the eastern planning area. The frontage along Rob Street, the property being to the left currently, will be improved with curb, gutter, and sidewalk to match the existing portions to the south. In addition, the area behind the walk will be landscaped. These improvements will complement the street corridor similar to the improvements across the street to the east, and will provide a uniform and updated character. The PCD zoning is a complementary zone district that transitions the proposed permitted uses and land use preservation to work with the surrounding zoning. The outdoor storage areas proposed can be specifically designated with the PCD, and the specific commercial uses can be prescribed closer to Rob Street. This is all being done in a manner that benefits the agricultural residential to the north, again something that straight zoning may not be able to accomplish. It is expected that most of the traffic for the property will be coming and going to the west from and towards the frontage road to get out toward Road. Daily trips are minimal since retail is not expected, and therefore, Rob Street does not require any improvements outside of the curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the property's frontage. The proposed development will not have a high demand for water or wastewater services, however, both will be provided. Due to the development controls established through this PCD, the site will not have a high impervious rate. Our storm flows will be released at a historic rate into the existing storm sewer within Rob Street. We believe we're meeting the goals of the Northwest Subarea Plan by way of diversifying and creating new employment, maintaining the diversified use of the land, as well as creating uses that will allow for a sustainable and resilient tax base. The uses proposed with this rezoning request will allow the applicant to grow their business and offer a diversified opportunity for employment. Their zero-waste business ideology not only helps the environment, but also creates employment opportunities that fulfill this demand. The property has long since been an attractive site for development interest, but given the wildlife corridor and irrigation ditches, given the irrigation ditches' existence, development has not moved forward. However, the applicant's proposal for the property allows both to remain as-is while creating business uses. One that will continue to prosper with perpetual need for planting new trees and shrubs and pruning, trimming existing species. As Stephanie mentioned, we did host a community meeting in July this past year, did not have anyone attend. We received some questions from the property owner to the north at the Planning Commission. He was interested in finding out how we were going to grade the property, how we would cross the Swadley ditch, and how the city's communication for the project is set up. Since the Planning Commission, we have reached out to the neighbor. Without any luck, have not been able to get in touch with him. In summary, we believe that this rezone request creates a complementary land use opportunity for the property that preserves open space and wildlife movement, as well as creates commercial and retail opportunity that allows these characteristics to be maintained. Thank you for your time. As Stephanie mentioned, we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from Council, I'd like to open this up to members of the public who may speak on this. At this time, I don't have anyone who's signed up to speak, but if you're here in City Hall and would like to speak, now is your opportunity. You may come to the podium, and I'll ask the clerk if we have anyone online who's raised their hands. If you do want to speak, just raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting. And I see that no one has stepped up either thing, so we'll conclude our public's input on this item and go to questions from Council. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephanie, it's been referenced a few times, both in your presentation and in the memo, that there could be a potential caretaker residence in either Planning Area One or Two. My question is, with this being a planned commercial development, what type of residential zoning would that caretaker residence have to follow? What potential size and characteristics would we be looking at?
So it's billed directly into the ODP as an allowable use in those specific planning areas, and they'd be subject to the development standards that everything else is in this. So Planning Area One and Two, setbacks, height, all of that, it's on the first page of the ODP in the lower left-hand corner, and thirty-five-foot height maximum.
Great, thank you.
Additional questions? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reading through the packet, I saw that Planning Commissioner Stern made some comments about accommodating, making sure that the investment in the property is also investing in increased pedestrian access to the TOD, and I'm just curious how that would be addressed through development of the site.
So we are requiring curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the street frontage on Rob to start continuing that sidewalk connection from the south.
Great, thank you.
Additional questions? Counselor Weaver.
With that sidewalk, the sidewalk in the picture was sort of the old style that goes right up to the street. Would that match on the other side, or would it be setback with vegetation?
I do believe it's an attached walk. Yeah, it would match, so it would be attached, similar to across the street, yes.
Is that enough to accommodate the kind of movement to the TOD, since we've been?
That is, yeah, that's our requirement for that whole street section there. So it's been evaluated by our engineering division. It's in our streetscape design manual that way. All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Ms. Stevens, I had a question. Would the caretaker's cottage also be primarily metal or allow metal?
It would be subject to the same standards of the ODP, so it would have to follow actually the Architectural and Site Design Manual, except that it could be metal technically as a primary material, but it would have to have an enhanced facade for whatever seen from Rob Street.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Before I close the public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Dozeman, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number Zero Three, Two Thousand Twenty-Two, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at forty-eight seventy-seven Rob Street from Agricultural One, A-One, to Planned Commercial Development, PCD, on second reading, and that it takes effect fifteen days after final publication for the following reasons. One, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the rezoning after conducting a proper public hearing. Two, the proposed rezoning has been reviewed by the Community Development Department, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. And three, the proposed zoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section Twenty-Six dash three zero three point D of the Code of Laws.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Nosler-Bank. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hoppe?
I just want to say, I think that this project is, this is a good place for this project, and I appreciate you bringing your company and this vision into our community. So thank you.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. I want to echo what Ms. Hoppe just said. It just seems like this is a use and a piece of land that were a match made in heaven, so I'm excited to see this moving forward. And I just also want to thank that there was attempts to follow up with the neighbor that had expressed some questions and concerns. I think that that's the quality of care that our city does, and I just appreciate that the people interested in the project recognize that follow-up communication with neighbors goes a long way and building good relationships. I just really appreciate that, and I hope you guys do the farmer's market that was just mentioned briefly in passing. So I just, I love your vision and look forward to seeing that come to fruition.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number Four. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number Twenty-One dash Two Thousand Twenty-Two, a resolution approving a major subdivision at five-eight-zero-seven dash five-eight-two-three West Thirty-Eighth Avenue in the mixed-use neighborhood zone district, reference case number WS dash twenty-one dash zero-eight. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a major subdivision on property located at fifty-eight-o-seven to fifty-eight-twenty-three West Thirty-Eighth Avenue. The purpose of the request is to subdivide the property into thirty total lots to accommodate one commercial lot, twenty-nine townhome lots, and a common area tract. The plat is required to divide the property along each townhome in the development to be owned separately.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is a public hearing. It is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you intend to testify on this matter by the fact that you testify you agree to tell the truth as you understand it in this case. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation?
We do. Scott Cutler, Senior Planner.
Okay, Mr. Cutler.
Thank you. This is Case Number WS Two Thousand One-O Eight, which is a request for approval of a major subdivision in the MUN Zone District on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the subdivision regulations, and this presentation. Properties within the city of Wheat Ridge and all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear this case. This is a 2020 aerial view of the property, which is outlined in red, and it is located on the north side of Thirty-Eighth Avenue between Eaton and Harland Street and just to the northwest of the intersection with Benton Street. It's about one point four acres in size and currently contains two lots. The eastern lot contains a commercial and retail building from nineteen sixty, includes a large parking lot that surrounds it with multiple accessory buildings. The western lot contains two single-unit homes in a stacked configuration and multiple accessory buildings from the nineteen thirties. There are a wide range of uses in the area. Properties to the west and south contain a range of commercial uses and are commercial in nature. Properties to the north contain single-unit homes and some smaller multi-unit properties. Properties to the east at the corner of Thirty-Eighth and Eaton, across a shared access easement, were approved in 2021 for townhomes, and this site and that previously approved site are not contiguous and will not have connections between them. This property is zoned mixed-use neighborhood, MUN, as are most of the properties along Thirty-Eighth Avenue in this area due to a legislative rezoning in 2012 to the MUN Zone District. Properties to the north are zoned R-three, which allow for multifamily and for townhomes up to twelve units per acre, although they currently contain single-unit homes. Property just to the east of the site is zoned NC, in pink, and that is the access easement I mentioned earlier. And then there are some lower-density zones to the northeast along Eaton Street, generally R-one-A, but this property does not actually border any properties zoned for low density. The Community Development Department is reviewing an administrative site plan application including civil construction documents for mixed-use development containing a mix of commercial and residential uses at this site. A major subdivision is required to sell each residential unit separately as fee simple townhomes and to create common area tracts and utility easements. The subdivision consists of thirty lots and one common area tract to accommodate twenty-nine townhome units and one commercial lot. City Code requires City Council approval of major subdivisions, even though the commercial and residential uses are already permitted uses on the property. Staff has found the site plan to be approvable, which includes the site layout, setbacks, architecture, landscaping, and parking. The developer will be responsible for maintaining the existing public improvements along Thirty-Eighth Avenue and reconstructing where needed. The plat also dedicates all necessary access, utility, and drainage easements. Subdivision regulations are found in Article Four of the zoning code, and a subdivision is a reconfiguration of lots, tracts, or parcels for sale or development. It can create, remove, or define property lines, and it allows the city to evaluate right-of-way, and it allows the city to evaluate construction documents. A subdivision plat does not affect the zoning or permitted uses on the property. It enables development already permitted by the current MUN zoning and allows the developer to sell the dwelling units to individual buyers. A major subdivision would not be required if the units were not being platted for sale. Subdivision approvals are ministerial in nature and are nondiscretionary, so discussion of permitted uses and site design are not within City Council's jurisdiction for approvals. The plat corresponds with the approvable site plan and allows each unit to be sold separately and for the commercial building to be placed on its own lot. Each of the townhome buildings are highlighted approximately in red to show the general placement of the buildings. Each building will consist of two to five units and are generally set around the perimeter of the site, focusing on central open space areas and parking lot. The units are set back significantly from the northern property line, which is adjacent to the R-three developments to the north. The other sides are adjacent to commercial or the access easement. The common areas, including the drive aisles and common open spaces, are placed in a tract to be owned and maintained by the Owners Association, and I'll show this in more detail on the next slide. Plat also will dedicate easements which allow for the distribution of utilities such as water and sanitation to each lot, and these are being coordinated with the utility Track Day is being dedicated as a common area tract, which includes public utility easements, water and sanitation easements, detention facility easements, open space and parking for both the commercial building and assigned guest parking for residential uses. Everything highlighted in colors on this slide is included within Track Day, so it's pretty large. The green areas are primarily being used as landscape open space with some additional guest parking and pedestrian pathways. The access easements, adjacent commercial parking, and fire turnaround is shown in gray. A water detention facility will be placed below the parking areas and some open space in a vault, which is common for infill development projects. Lot thirty also contains some open space at the front of the existing patio area that is not being shown on this slide. The plat does not contain a lot of the approvable site detail from the site plan application and only shows lot lines and easement lines. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. Some utility upgrades will be required at the developer's expense and will be constructed with a project. There are no remaining comments on this application, and the engineering division has found the plat to be approvable. The site plan, which includes the architecture and landscaping and site design, has also been found approvable, and construction documents are currently under review by engineering. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days, and letters were sent to property owners and residents within a six-hundred-foot radius. Comments collected on Wheat Ridge speaks will be reviewed by City Council and entered into the public record, and we did receive one comment in support of the application during this posting period. No additional inquiries were received. And on April seventh, Planning Commission recommended approval of the request. Ultimately, staff has concluded that the request complies with the subdivision regulations, corresponds with the approvable site plan, and all agencies can serve the property with upgrades required at the developer's expense. Approval of the plat will allow development of the site as allowed under the MUN Zone District and permitted by the site plan to proceed. For all of those reasons, staff is requesting that council approves the request. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant is also available in person for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from Council, I will open it up for the public to speak on this item if they wish. Now is an opportunity. I have no one signed up to speak, but if you are here in the City Hall and would like to speak, now is your opportunity. Please come to the podium, and I'll ask clerk if anyone has raised their hand online or on the telephone who would like to speak, and it doesn't look like anyone is coming to the podium to speak or online, so we will close our public discussion on this and go to questions from Council. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the, on the, on the maps, I couldn't quite tell. It says in the staff report that the applicant intends to partially demolish and restore the existing commercial building on Lot Thirty. Will it have the same footprint as what's currently there, or will the footprint be smaller?
I'll have the applicant answer that question.
Hi, my name is Jay Siegel. I'm with Storyville.
Hi, my name is Jay Siegel. I'm with Storyville, the developer. The question about the size of the retail building is going to decrease from about, let's see, about 4,800 square feet to about 2,600 square feet, keeping intact the existing infinity pi location in its entirety.
So when we do the dedication, we're dedicating it to 2,800 square feet, and it's currently 4,800 square feet. And in that other square feet, is that where those two townhouses behind it are going to be placed?
Yes, and I can't necessarily speak directly to the exact square footages, but yes, that's right. So the space that is effectively going to be the former northern portion of that building is making way for those two units that you see in the site plan.
Great, thank you.
Additional discussion from council? Questions? Mr. Cutler, I had a question for you. Directly to the east of this property, there's a parcel, I think it's zoned NC, and if I recall, back when we did a rezoning on a property north of here, that was, it's part of a flag lot?
Yes, so-
That's the pole of a flag lot?
It kind of is a flag lot. It's actually owned by the Incarnation HOA, which is a couple blocks to the north, and they own and maintain that access easement. But it's an access easement to many of the properties along that kind of border it, including many of the properties to the north.
Okay. Does this development interact or interfere with that access in any way?
It will not in the sense that it's not being included in the boundaries of the subdivision. It will be able, like, there will be pedestrian access to that easement, but not any vehicular access.
Okay. And who maintains that property?
It's owned and maintained by the Incarnation Homeowners Association, so at 41st and Fenton.
Okay. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions from the staff or from the applicant before I close the public hearing? Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious what the timing is of this project with the other phase, the Judy I. How is Judy II and Judy I?
Yes, good question. So they are, while they're separate projects, we are treating them more or less as a single construction project, so that they'll be done in sequential order around the same time. We expect to break ground this summer.
Great, thank you.
Okay, one more time. Before I close the public hearing, any more questions? I'm going to close the public hearing, and who is this? Ms. Counselor Ohm may have a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number 21-2022, a resolution approving a major subdivision at 5807 to 5823 West 38th Avenue in the mixed-use neighborhood Zone District for the following reasons. Number one, City Council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 and 26-407 of the Code of Laws. Number two, the requested subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has poured its recommendation of approval. Number three, the subdivision plat has been found in compliance with Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws. Number four, all agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense, and with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall pay the required fees only with parkland dedication at time of building permit. Number two, the developer shall enter in a subdivision improvement agreement, any lot sale restriction covenant agreement with the city at the time of recordation of the subdivision plat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hulteen. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number five. Counselor Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill number 04-2022, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 4501 Wadsworth Boulevard from restricted commercial RC to mixed-use neighborhood MUN, case number WZ22-02, at issue. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from restricted commercial RC to mixed-use neighborhood MUN for property located at 4501 Wadsworth Boulevard. The zone change will result in a zoning that will more accurately reflect surrounding conditions and other nearby zoning designations.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion? Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number 04-2022, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 4501 Wadsworth Boulevard from restricted commercial RC to mixed-use neighborhood MUN. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, May 23rd, 2022, at 7:00 PM, as a virtual meeting and in City Council chambers if allowed to meet in person on that date per COVID-19 restrictions, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second by Mr. Ohm. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number six. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill number 05-2022, an ordinance amending Section 26-615 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning small cell CMRS facilities. At issue, since 2017, Colorado state law has required that local jurisdictions allow small cell facilities in all zone districts and in the right-of-way. Staff has processed a handful of applications since then. This ordinance is proposed to update regulations in response to recent public concerns and based on lessons learned over the last five years.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
You may. I move to approve Council Bill number 05-2022, an ordinance amending Section 26-615 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning small cell CMRS facilities. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, May 23rd, 2022, at 7:00 PM, as a virtual meeting and in City Council chambers if allowed to meet in person on that date per COVID-19 restrictions, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites. Will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. That concludes our business items on the agenda. We will now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one quick item request from City Council, but then I would like to reserve a little bit of my time for the chief again this evening, if that's okay. He would like to give some updates on some crime-related issues in the community. But first of all, the Parks and Rec Department is applying for a Colorado Health Foundation grant for the green on 38th Avenue, and we need a letter of support for City Council, from City Council for that grant. And I was just wondering if we could get consensus this evening to draft a letter from City Council for that grant application.
Do we have consensus to have the city staff move a letter forward? We do.
Now, if it's okay, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Murtha for a few updates.
Okay, Chief Murtha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. First, as a point of personal privilege, I'd like to thank everybody who reached out after the incident with Officer Alan Fisher and his stabbing that occurred not that long ago. It feels like a long time now. Officer Fisher's doing better, recovering, but it'll be at least six months to a year before we have an opportunity to evaluate whether he can return to work or not. So his healing is ongoing, but tremendous community support, and I thank everybody who was reaching out, and I pass those thoughts on to Alan. And his daughter was here tonight to accept the proclamation, so thank you for that. A couple of major cases in the last, I'd say, the last three months, we've had several major cases, and I just wanted to give everybody an update on a few of those, because I think sometimes they just kind of disappear into memory, and then you might get asked at a community event, whatever happened to that. So I'll be brief on these, but if you have questions, I'll answer what I can. Smokers in and out at 3875 Wadsworth. For those of you who remember, there was an armed robbery that took place there. Two males entered the store, demanded products, and were confronted by the owner's son. There was an exchange of, well, there was gunfire in the business. Two of the employees, the son and another employee, were shot, seriously wounded. By most accounts, our officer's life-saving technique saved at least one of those employees there. Shortly after the incident took place, we spotted a vehicle leaving the scene, tried to engage that vehicle. The vehicle almost immediately crashed. The occupants fled. We were unable to locate the occupants, but we did collect a lot of evidence from the vehicle. We have substantial leads. We also believe that this group is tied to a string of robberies in Denver. About 50 metro-wide vape store burglaries and two robberies, where we believe they're the same suspects. So they hit us once, but they certainly have hit Denver quite a bit. I can't go into too much detail, but we have a high degree of confidence that we've identified some persons of interest in that case there. Foothills Credit Union, the brand-new Foothills Credit Union over at Clear Creek Drive, on day one, a vehicle drove through the front plate glass of the credit union. I spoke to the manager over there. On day two, he clearly was upset about what was happening, and based on my conversation, he was upset because he felt that maybe they were being targeted. He couldn't really calm his employees down regarding the motivation that might have occurred. We identified the suspect on videotape as somebody we knew, somebody that frequented the area. The vehicle did not belong to that person, but we identified that person positively and issued an arrest warrant. That person was arrested, taken into custody subsequent to a conversation with that individual. There was no targeting of that particular store. This was a combination of lifestyle choices that led him to a place where he could not control his vehicle. So that is a case pending in the courts right now. Radio Resource, Radio Resource is off the beating path a little bit. It's on the west side of town, and it's very close to I-70. Radio Resource, for those who don't know, supplies, two-way radio communication, generally for special events, high-end radios, the type that we use, Motorola-type radios. And three times in the last approximately four months, they've had a vehicle that has driven through the front door and stolen packages and items out of that business. I can say that Colorado State Patrol has contacted a female party who was in a stolen vehicle with some of the radios. That has been a clue that has led us to several warrants. Those warrants are active, and we are just looking for some people. This past weekend, same MO, same thing happened, Red Wing Shoes, and then subsequently, Radio Resource, that was the third one on this weekend. They drove again in through the front. Our officers immediately realized that the MO was to cause damage to another store, to divert officers, and then go over to Radio Resource. So being the quick-thinking officers they were, they went directly to Radio Resource, found the vehicle as it was pulling out of the building, tried to engage in the vehicle, chose not to stop, continued on its way, but we did have identified the vehicle. So as we connect these cases, we'll see if it's the same. We think probably it is, and we're just waiting to pick some people up on that one. So we hope to have good news for the owner. We've been in contact with the owner, Mr. Porter, several times, and our detective's been out there. He's complimentary of the police department, not complimentary of the pursuit policy, and there's not a lot we can do with that, but we are working very closely to resolve those cases. Hilltop Apartments at 7669 West 32nd Avenue. This year, we've had several arsons. Most of those were Porter Johns in the parks, and some campfires in our green belt. Really not the type of arson that you would consider arson, but we had one true arson on March 31st this year. An individual went inside the apartments, known to the other occupants of the apartment that was ultimately set on fire. We have this person on video. That person was arrested, charged with first-degree arson, and a preliminary hearing is in process. Lastly, I'll just let you know that the last homicide we had that occurred April 13th in 2020 in Panorama Park, essentially what the rundown will tell you is that almost all of the actors, I think one is outstanding, have all either taken a plea or been convicted of that homicide. So we have one pending, I think flip-flopped on their plea arrangement, and now we're just waiting to see how the district attorney handles that. So all in all, with these cases, several closed, one that's pretty close, and we're working in conjunction with Denver on, and I'm happy to field any questions you might have on those crimes or any other crimes in the city.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate an update. Are there any questions for the chief from council at this time? Chief, thanks so much. Please give our best to Officer Fisher and Officer Lou. Thank them for their service and their bravery.
Thank you. Will do.
Mr. Goff? Do you have any? Are you all done?
I am all done. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight, okay. We will go to elected officials' matters. We'll start with our clerk. Clerk Kirkpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have nothing new this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll start with Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. On a happy note, I want to congratulate the Nuggets for winning last night. It was so exciting. At the very end, I was just yelling. I mean, it was great. So keep it up.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nosler Beck?
I just wanted to thank everybody for all of our teachers and students for a really great year. We're heading into that last kind of month of school, and I've had a really incredible experience figuring out what my kids are going to do this summer, just checking out local businesses and with the rec center, just some really great camps and enrichment opportunities, and they're all like within a mile of my house. And so I just encourage everybody to get creative and reach out to some of the really great programs around the community, and, you know, let's all stick around this summer and enjoy what Wheat Ridge has to offer.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. Over Easter, I just wanted, a member of my extended family, who lives in one of the neighboring communities around us, really appreciated the extra time and knowledge of an Applejack employee so much that he literally said he could have spent an hour talking to the employee about one of the products that they're offering there. I attended the Jeffco Thrive 2025 with Councilmember Dozeman, and I did see Councilmember Nosler Beck there at a different table. So that was pretty interesting with teachers and the Jeffco superintendent, and there's still another meeting that I will be able to attend. And then there's two things that I would kind of like to see maybe brought up in a future study session item that are a concern of our community. The first is, I would like to see our site triangle code be revised to match that of our surrounding metro area communities. Our current site triangle code is probably one of the least restrictive of our surrounding communities. And when I say least restrictive, the site triangle, the distance from the top of the curb to where other communities are, typically what I see is about a 24-inch height, and I believe our local roads are at around 36 inches, which may not seem like a lot, but when you have little kids that are walking on the streets and you have evergreen shrubs that are, you know, hitting that, you know, at least 36 inches, you can't see children when you go around those corners. And so that's something that I would like to be revised. I feel like it's a small change. There's a lot of data from our neighboring communities. And then the second item is something a little bit different that I'd like to see some revisions to our code. I'm not sure what direction we're in right now, but regarding irrigation conservation, we've been in what's been considered mega drought for the past couple of years. This year seems to be no different, and we really need to be water-conscious. I'd like to see something where we're proposing a minimum eight-foot width for overhead efficient spray irrigation and a moratorium on- everybody, you know, kind of something, substance, the state of Nevada actually has now mandated you can no longer have any turf and any streetscapes or any type of medium because they're obviously in a huge drought. And I feel like as a city that we could go further with our water conservation efforts. So those are the two things I'd like to see if I can get some support from fellow council members.
Okay, we have support by several counselors to add that to the agenda, so we'll direct our mayor pro tem and city manager to get that on a study session.
Thank you, appreciate it, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ohm. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a couple of updates about the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival that is going to be August 12, 13, and 14. However, the Zopee Family Italian Circus is returning this year, and they are actually offering a circus camp for kids ages seven through 15. The camp will run Monday, the 8th, through Friday, the 12th, from 10 to 3:00 daily, and they also offer before and after care for an additional cost. And the camp will culminate in a performance of those kiddos on Friday at the 2:00 PM show, so it will really attract families to come and check out the circus, and then, you know, stay and enjoy the music and the fireworks for the Carnation Festival. So like Councilmember Nosler Beck had mentioned, we have a lot of really awesome camps in our community, and this is a new and unique camp that we will be offering this year, so we'd like for everyone to give it a shot. Registration for vendors and the parade are also open on thecarnationfestival.org, so please go sign up, and we're only a few months away, and planning is definitely underway. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Dozeman, will young people be able to sort of run away and join the circus if they have that opportunity?
You know, if they want to run away with the circus, it might inspire some-
Perhaps only in their dreams. All right, thank you very much. Counselor Weaver.
I'm so excited for the Carnation Festival. It's already exciting. It already started at the farm. I think there should be an adult section of circus camp, so if that becomes available, will you please make that an announcement? I just wanted to give a shout-out to our public service people. I just, we have many of our leaders sitting in front of us here, and I just wanted to thank all of you. I just, you all make our city really, really great to live in, so thank you all. And I also wanted to thank Karen specifically. What a great thing, the tree sale, so thanks. People have just been super excited about this new event that we're now going to have in Wheat Ridge, so thank you so much. Did you want to say anything about just how that ended up? And I just, I don't know if you want to tell the story that you told before I walked in here about-
Yeah, I can't give you a final number. I'm not sure. I know the goal this past weekend was to sell 50 of the remaining trees, and they were, I stopped by, I don't know, probably around 10:30, and they had already sold close to 30, so I'm going to guess they met their goal. But the story that I told Councilmember Weaver was that I was over at the mulch pile, and there were several people there just chatting about the trees that they purchased, and it was like neighbors meeting neighbors, all because of the tree sale and getting their mulch to put around their trees. So it was a fun thing to observe. Thanks.
All around the mulch pile, so thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much tonight. As we're talking about summer camps, I actually just wrote an article for Wheat Ridge Living Magazine about parents getting their kids involved in summer camps because it's good to avoid the summer slide and keep the kids involved, so there's a lot out there. I would recommend try to find a local one, and if you can, support them. And if you can find it, find it by in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of things. First of all, I want to just thank all of our amazing city employees and the public service. I think the people who work for our city make us look exceptionally good and bring great service, and I knew that before I was on council, and now that I'm on council, I have an even deeper appreciation for the passion and professionalism that comes with being a member of the Wheat Ridge family. And we're lucky to have Clerk Patrick, too, so thank you for that. The fourth-oldest profession. I think we're in the fifth-oldest. Then, the second thing on my list here is, I'm going to do a sandwich. I'm going to do two happies with my negative one in between. So this is a pet peeve of mine is people walking with their dogs off-leash. It will always be a problem, but this time of year it becomes an even more visible problem, and there are reasons why you need to have your dogs leashed. It's for the safety of your dogs, the safety of other dogs, the safety of other animals, the protection of private property. And my office in my house looks, it's on the second floor, and I watch people walk all day, and I just unfortunately watched a dog attack and kill a rabbit right in front of my house that was off-leash, and I just thought how easily that could have been a domesticated animal, because, you know, you just don't control your dog off-leash. So please leash your dogs, and I hope the Wheat Ridge Police Department is aware of that being like a real issue in neighborhoods and is enforcing that when the opportunity arises, because it's, some very bad things can happen, and people think their dogs are good, and they do have good dogs, but they have prey instincts, and I see a lot of dogs disrespecting private property, too, because they're not leashed. Okay, and then on a happy note, I just want to look around and say I don't see any plastic bottles, and so I didn't have any contributions to the plastic bottle guilt fund for Earth Month, so I just want to thank Raise My Bottle to my peers for not bringing any disposable single-use plastics for the entire month of April. And guess what? You can do it again next month, too. Really, every month is Earth Month, so I would love for us to continue that pledge up here. I certainly will. And with that, thank you, guys.
Thank you. I want to thank Chief Murtha for coming and giving us an update on the public safety that's underway, and we want to thank you and the work of your department throughout our city. I want to recognize Director O'Donnell. We got a really terrific Parks and Recreation sort of summer guide with all sorts of things to do, and, gosh, my family sat down and looked at that, and I thought we were busy already, but there's certainly a lot more that we could be doing, so thank you very The weather's getting nice. The school will be out soon, but with the longer days, we have more children taking activities outside and staying healthy. As you drive around our city, please be careful. Just drive slowly and be very careful, and this is a great place to spend your time and no reason to go too far, too fast. So if there's no more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned. We will be here next week in a study session at 6:30. So until then, we are adjourned. Thank you.